Hearing none, we will vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. It's unanimous, four people. School committee person Barbara Skar is absent tonight. Okay, it's now time for public comments. Anyone that would like to address the committee just come forward and if you'd give your name and address for the record, then we'll move on from there. Hi.
Hi. Ben Cole, 82 Brick Hill Road. Outgoing president of the CFT.
Jennifer Salmon, three Marin Alav, soon to be president.
Yep. Just here, two quick announcements. One, to invite everyone to the retirement dinner tomorrow for the retirees for the Chelmsford Public Schools. It'll be starting, I believe, at 3:30 at the Radisson. And second is, I just want to thank you. As a result of the elections, I'll be leaving as president of the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers and Jen Salmon's taking over.
Well, congratulations to both of you for different actions.
Yeah. Give me more free time for Halloween costumes.
Well, I've lived through your Halloween costumes. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, well, say that I'm excited to work with everybody. I have taught in the town for 14 years and I'm also a resident. My, one of my three children goes to school here. I'm excited.
They're excited.
They're excited for us too.
I'm excited to make the schools better. That's my goal for the students and that I also have to thank Ben for stepping up and, but honestly, in a tough time when I think that not a lot of people or anyone really wanted to do it and he did it, so I know that that's very much appreciated.
Well, we've had a good relationship, I think, and, you know, last teachers bargaining was the first time we hadn't gone to mediation in a long time, so the relationship's good and hope it keeps going that way.
And I just want to thank you for stepping into that public arena like that and putting yourself out there. That's a big deal. And Jen, once again, congratulations for you doing the same. We really appreciate it and I'm sure the whole town appreciates it.
Thank you.
Can I just real quickly? Certainly. I just want to mention too to thank Ben for his help. Ben was one of the first people that reached out to me as I was coming into the district and I very much enjoyed working with you over the course of the last year and I know you're going to remain active on the negotiating team, so it's not like you're going anywhere. But it is a thankless job at times and, you know, I thank you for doing it and working really, you know, well with the administration over the last year and I look forward to working with Jen. I know it's going to be a seamless transition and, again, just, you know, thanks for the continued work and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Emma, do you have some news for us?
It's been a while since we've had a meeting, but I'm not going to lie, I really had trouble putting this together. We're in that awkward time of the year where finals are about to start. School ends next week and I honestly didn't know that school ended on the 16th until like yesterday. I was planning on going to the 17th. I would have shown up, I would have gotten up and gotten ready and the bus would have never came. So, senior week was last week and I will say that I was not very happy learning in my French class, seeing them playing on the bouncy house out the window and hearing all the cheers and it was great. Prom was also last week, so it was really nice to see all my senior friends go off in their gowns and their tuxes and they did look really nice. Graduation was on Saturday, so congratulations to all of our seniors and their parents and they will be missed. Mentors, their training, our training was last Friday and this upcoming Friday we get our assignments, so move up days are next week. And finals start Monday, so that's exciting. Spring sports awards were last night and I would like to mention Kristen Hohenstein placed fourth in the 100 hurdles and broke her PR and a school record with 15:32 and Walker Horton improved his school record at NBC's with 55:57 in the 400 hurdles and Claire Markey placed second in all states and improved her PR and her school record with a time of 10 minutes and 35 seconds. There will be a fall sports meeting after school tomorrow. Right now, boys volleyball are taking on Westford in the Division One North Finals with the Tundra in tow dressed for whiteout. Murals are coming along and they look really nice and now that they're getting repainted. And children's play auditions started yesterday with the high school and moved to the middle schools today and tomorrow. The show will go up in October, so we will be rehearsing all throughout the summer and it is written by our very own Jake Webmore.
Very good.
Thank you. Good job.
Good news?
Yep, I have one piece of good news I'd like to highlight. The students at the McCarthy Play, The Lion King, were nominated for 10, not one, not two, but three, but 10 Massachusetts Educational Theatre Guild Awards and the students will be performing at the gala in June. And the awards went to Best Supporting Actress, Best Supporting Actor, Best Hair and Makeup Design and Execution, Best Sound Design and Execution, the Specialty Ensemble, Best Dance Ensemble, Best Chorus Ensemble, Best Acting Ensemble. Not sure what this is, but there's an award for the Adult Simba and Best Overall Production. So, congratulations to the McCarthy Middle School. That's very exciting. They hear about their peers up at the high school and now here we are at the middle school with the same type of awards.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Yes, as we kick off the agenda this evening, our first matter is to invite Center School Principal Kelly Rogers up to continue our spotlight on the school. So we have now, over the course of this school year, gone through each of our schools in the district and the last school to present on their work is Kelly at Center and she's got-
Last but not least.
Last but not least, and she's brought some friends with her tonight, so we'll turn it over to Kelly to hear about the Center School happenings.
Great. You may have noticed that this is probably the youngest population you've seen at one of the school committees in any time, so they're going to be-
Kelly, will you just grab the mic a little closer to you?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks.
So we have a young population here with us today that they're going to be helping me out with my presentation this evening, so I'm looking forward to that. So I just wanted to review some of our accomplishments and some of our initiatives that we've participated in this year at the Center School. It's been a fabulous year, my first year, but thinking about, you know, what are we striving to achieve, what are our goals? And I always look back to thinking about, well, what is our mission and what is our vision? What is our vision here at Center and in Chelmsford? And it's really to cultivate those, you know, and inspire creative learners, lifelong learners, to make sure that they're invested, that they're problem solving, that they're engaged and that they have that integrity and self-respect to move forward, to be the contributing members of our community. And that really truly is what we want for our students. And how do we get there and what do we do? Well, the foundation that we need to provide for them is by building our school community and our positive school culture, very important. We've worked really hard this year with our pride initiative. It really just kicked off. Our school council created a pride matrix which consists of, you know, what does it look like to persevere in the classroom? What does it look like, what does respect look like in the hallways? And so we've shared that with all of our staff. It's become our common language at the Center School. We have our pride matrix that's posted on our website. And again, I always talk to the students about, you know, we can, we can talk about these things, but how do you put them into action? What do they look like? We've also instituted this year our all-school meetings, so we have, we get together about once a month, once every other month, and we've focused on the pride attributes. So, for example, we had the UMass Lowell hockey team come in with us and spent some time at one of our all-school meetings talking about what does integrity look like on the ice and off the ice. We also had a jump rope team from New Hampshire come in and they talked about what it was like to persevere, what did they, what did they need to do to achieve the goals that they've, that they've achieved. So really kind of making that come alive for our students at Center are very important. You may notice I've got some books in front of me. We've also instituted a literature integration, so each, each grade levels gets a pride bag and in their pride bag is different literatures about all of our, all of our pride, just the pride matrix of books about perseverance, integrity and empathy, and those are read and talked about within the classrooms each month. Also service learning projects, a big part of what we've done at the Center School this year. We've been involved with Cradles to Crayons. We've been involved with the Wish Foundation and creating camp bags for our students. And what's really been, and also the food pantry. What's been great about that is we have a student council, which you'll get to meet some of them here just in a minute, and they've been really taking an active role in our service learning projects this year. So for example, for our Cradles to Crayons initiative, we actually had the truck come, came out and our student council members got to literally roll out carts of all the items that were collected at the Center School and lift them on the lift and help the driver help them wheel them onto the truck. And they, they got to see the impact that they were making. Also for our food pantry, we have the luxury at the Center School to be right next to the food pantry, so we decided that we were going to take a walking field trip and so the student council members, we got wagons and we wheeled the food over and they carried it with them and, and it was just, just that, that sense of pride about we're really making a difference and we're really building that, that positive school culture. And I think it meant a lot for the students to really be actively involved with those projects. Like I mentioned, we have a fourth grade student council that has just really taken off this year. I want to thank Michael Fahey, he's a volunteer with us, our fourth grade teachers that have made this student council what it's become this year. They get together about once, once every other week and they're talking about service learning projects. They coordinate theme, theme week and theme days. And so, and they have, they have just fabulous ideas about what they want the Center School to represent. And so tonight I've invited them here with us because our third, these are some of our third trimester student council members and they created a Center School pledge. And so we all kind of collaborated about this idea and thinking about, great, this would be fabulous for our morning announcements. Let's, let's say our, our Center School pledge and we talked about every day. And I love the feedback they give me because they're like, Mrs. Rogers, I think every day might be too much. Why don't we just kick off the week by doing this every Monday? So that's in fact what we're going to do because that's, that was their idea. So I'm going to have them come up. We also have a podium that was handmade that our students use for when they present. Our students also present at our all-school meetings, our student council members, and they present from this podium and I'm going to have them use that here today so they can kind of just show you what, what their experience is like here at Center. And they're going to recite their new Center School pledge, so come on up, Center School friends. Let's do it.
Very.
I pledge every day to show our Lions pride. I will persevere through all challenges I face.
Show respect and integrity in all that I do.
Be dedicated to our Center School community.
Show empathy to everyone I know and need.
Every day, everywhere to everyone, we will demonstrate our Center School pride. Let's go Lions!
If you would like a copy of the Center School pledge, it's on the end of the table.
And right here. Pass it out. If you would like to see a copy of our Center School pledge, perfect. So, does anyone have any questions for our fourth grade student council members? So I just wanted to ask you, tell me what, what have you enjoyed most about being on the student council this year?
Helping my fellow classmates.
Helping your fellow classmates, fabulous. I love that. Anything else?
I really like the service projects because it made me feel really good.
It makes you feel really good inside those service projects, absolutely.
Knowing that we're helping our school and even other people that are even in our school.
Right, absolutely. So these are your future leaders right here, perhaps school, school committee members someday. Love that. So thank you all for coming, I so appreciate it, nice job. So you can sit back down and you can join us or you can leave, that's fine too. So we have our, building our school community and our positive school culture, which is so important to us, but also developing social emotional awareness is really important as well at the Center School because in fact, that is also how we're going to get, how are we going to reach our goal and make sure that we are contributing members to our community. So we have many initiatives that we've been involved with at the Center School this year. Our Zones of Regulation, so our guidance counselor Kate Lillis, she has met with all of the classroom teachers, she has met with our specialists, so the gym teacher, the PE teacher, same thing, art teacher, to talk about what these Zones of Regulation are. And they're just self-awareness strategies that students can use to help them cope through various situations. So again, just providing that common language at the Center School is really important for us. So if, you know, a student's at recess, if a student is, you know, art class, or if they're in the regular classroom, that we're all speaking that common language of, you know, how can you, how can you regulate your emotions? We also, we're in our second year of our mentoring program at the Center School, so we have about 20 mentors. These are various staff members who just really take a student on under their wing and they do a special project with them or they just check in with them once or twice a week. So that's going really well and we'll continue that next year as well. And then you may have heard about PBIS, that's Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And so that's just thinking about how can we promote that positive, positive behavior intervention schoolwide? How can we model that for students and what does that look like? All kind of building that positive school culture as well. We all met as a staff on May 20th, our half-day in-service day. We met to collaborate as a staff to be thinking about, you know, additional interventions that we can put in place for our staff to make sure that, again, we have that common language, that we're, you know, being proactive and positive with our, with our students. We've also, Dr. Brogan, she's our school psychologist, she piloted a program called Mind Up, the Mind Up curriculum, and she, she paired with a fourth grade teacher this year. And the Mind Up curriculum is, it just fosters social and emotional awareness and it really, again, it's, it's to reduce stress and anxiety, it's helping students manage their emotions, manage stress. And so I invited another group of students here today, which they're going to come up in a minute, but I'm going to show you a video. Dr. Brogan had interviewed some of our students about their Mind Up experience this year. What's really great about the Mind Up curriculum is it talks, it teaches students about how your brain actually is involved with the emotions that you feel and the reactions that you have. So I'm just going to show you a short clip.
Hi, I'm Samantha and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, I'm eight.
I'm fourth grade.
Hi, I'm Erin and I'm fourth grade.
What have you guys learned about the brain during Mind Up lessons?
One of the benefits of the brain is that it has different parts of the brain. One is the amygdala and the hippocampus, the reacting activity system, and the, the frontal cortex. The amygdala controls your emotions. The hippocampus, which is almost like, the hippocampus is almost the wise leader. And it stores the memory and the prefrontal cortex is really it's used to like make sure that you're having a good day and to make sure that you're not having bad thoughts.
Like we learned about how, we learned about how the portions brain work together through your body function and, you know.
Why is that important for school?
Because if you're being happy or being with other people, then you're going to embarrass them.
How do you notice mindfulness at school, Erin?
Well, you can like, it also, it helps with your learning as well too, you know, but if you're, you're wound up and crazy, you need to calm down so you can do better. If you're wound up and crazy.
What is mindfulness important that you get ready for middle school or do, I think you use mindfulness at home too?
I think mindfulness is important to go to middle school because you're going up and you're going to share with them, so you have to make, yes, but if you're getting like awkward, you're going to be harder than your kids. And to get around in middle school is pretty big, so you have to, you have to stop, you have to think and if you're not, you're not going to get to class on time. And also if you, if you're all wound up, scientists actually prove that if you're happy in school, you do better. So I think if you are more happy in middle school, you're going to do way better and you're going to increase up.
I totally, I proved at home, but I use baseball because like baseball, pitching under a lot of stress, so I use mindfulness. Thank you very much.
Well, they were quite articulate about how they, how they felt is, how they were affected by Mind Up. And like I said, it involves, they're talking about the brain. Dr. Brogan really got a kick out of one of the students right after they took the MCAS, most recently the ELA MCAS. And one of the students approached Dr. Brogan and she said, "They talked about the amygdala and I know exactly what it was." So they're obviously the mindfulness we all, we all hear a lot about. But they talk about in this video, the students are really able to articulate about if they feel calm, they're going to be able to succeed academically. And so again, how are we going to reach that goal is that we're going to put these initiatives in place to make sure that they are successful. So we have, we thought it might be fun, our fourth grade, some of our participating fourth grade students that have been part of the pilot, they engage in what they call core practices every day. And these are just relaxation techniques that get them ready to learn. So we would like, they would like to involve you in a relaxation exercise right now. So Center School friends, why don't you come up and, all right. All right. So, are you all in order?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead. You're on.
I'm sure it's been a long day for many of us here today. Please join us by sitting in a comfortable position. Close your eyes and look down.
Pay close attention to your breathing. Feel air come in through your nose and then fill your chest and your belly. Calmly and slowly let the breath leave your belly, then your chest and finally your nose.
Keep your shoulders dropped and relaxed. Think about the air coming into your body and the air going out.
Bring your attention back to your breath if your mind tries to think about other things. Notice your stomach rising and falling. Let your belly be soft and relaxed.
When you are ready, open your eyes slowly and take a slow, deep breath.
Please remember that everyone will open their eyes at different times, so be mindful of your own pace.
What was that like for some of you?
Does anyone want to comment? How did it feel?
I enjoyed it.
Did you feel calm?
I do, I feel better.
Excellent. Magical. All right, nice job. Super, thank you so much. If any of the students need to leave now, feel free. It'll be just a few more minutes if you would like to stay. Thank you so much for coming. And so thinking about how we're going to reach that goal and what we need to do to achieve that, obviously developing our academic initiative is so important, developing those 21st century learners. You know, how are we providing these opportunities for students to create, to communicate and to collaborate with one another? So we have instituted, as you know, district-wide or at the elementary level, our standard-based report cards. And so this is a way for teachers and parents and students to know exactly where their students are and how they're hitting those learning targets and so we can provide interventions for students as well. And also thinking about, I've really been talking with the staff about goal setting for students so they can tell exactly how they're, how they're meeting those targets and that they're setting those goals, setting goals for themselves and just seeing where they're, where they need to improve and what they're, what they're exceeding at. And also we have Title I math and reading intervention that's taken place this year. We've been fortunate enough to have our math interventionists be part of our Title I programming, which I think has really been a benefit to us. And what I really like too is be thinking about how we're building these, these foundational skills for our students so then they can kind of, you know, gain that momentum to, for higher order thinking skills or we're going to climb that hierarchy of Bloom's taxonomy. And then very exciting, and this is kind of my passion, is we've been involved with a science pilot this year and they're, they're kit-based, they're, the students are investigating, it's hands-on, it's inquiry-oriented. We're aligning ourselves with the new Massachusetts State Science Standards, which were just adopted recently, and just really moving forward with that. So we've had a lot of teachers participating in that pilot as well. But again, how are we providing these experiences and these opportunities for children so to be sure that they're, you know, they're able to create and they're inspired to learn and that they're problem solving? Another initiative that we've been, that we've taken part in is our grade two teachers this year have been fortunate enough to be involved with a project called the Novel Engineering Project. We actually have a parent of a grade two student who works for Tough Center, Tough Center for Engineering and Education. They have a National Science Foundation grant called Novel Engineering. And what this entails is an integration of engineering practices and our literature. And so students were, read a novel and then they were asked to, to solve some sort of a problem with that. So I'm going to show you a short video clip and I want you just to notice as you're watching, again, that those 21st century skills, the students are communicating, they're collaborating with one another and they're problem solving. So just take a look and also you might not only just focus on the two students, but take a look and just, it's a short clip, see what the students are doing behind the scenes.
Okay, so you did a little template? A design? Tyler, what are you doing?
Um, I'm putting these things on. This is a sticky thing, so we can stick.
How's it going to help you put your chair?
Open the seat up.
Just love that. So what we're seeing here is we're seeing these, first of all, all of these students are engaged. They're all actively learning. It's student-centered. I love this little guy, he's drawn a whole template. He's got the whole engineering design process down. And I did interview several students throughout, throughout the project and through the whole design process and asked them, "Do you think you're going to have to, you know, make modifications or changes to your design and to your, to your project?" And some of them would start to say, "No, I think it's going to work the first time." Or they were building a chair and the legs didn't quite work. So eventually they realized that, you know what, this whole engineering design process is, you're not going to get it on the first time. We've got to tweak this, we've got to collaborate with one another to see just what works best. So fun stuff. And again, we cannot forget our family and community connections, so important because we are a team. We could not, wouldn't be as successful without our family and community connections and collaboration and engagement. We are fortunate at the Center School, as many of you know, we have, we have a very active PTO community, active PTO parents that provide enrichment opportunities throughout our K through four level. And we have various fundraisers that they've been, that we've been involved with this year. One of our new fundraisers is, has been our Race for Education and this is where we got, we came together again as a community in the school and the students actually, it promoted health and well-being. We, they actually walked around our Center School field one day, which we designated our Race for Education Day. So we really came together as a team. And I know Taste of Chelmsford reaches out to the community as well. We don't only just get Center School families at the Taste of Chelmsford, but we get community members as well. Community Read-In was a huge success this year, again, really tapping into the community and getting the community members into the schools just to see what's happening and just to have them working with our students, just, you know, what a thrill that is. Our Science Fair, which is coordinated by our PTO each year, again, that whole family community engagement. The Science Fair projects are actually done at home and the families are definitely involved with those projects, but again, a nice opportunity for students and families to collaborate with one another on, on home-based projects. All-School Field Day was new to us this year. It was the first time the Center School had an all-school field day. And so again, we came together as a community, we had volunteers, we had parents coming out to watch and all the students were engaged in activities, so it was quite fun. And they all got a little bit wet too, there were some water games, so that- There were some water games, so that was a big surprise for many. And of course, we can't forget our music and art, or, you know, very important that we have our, have that for all of our students as well. So there's something really that everybody can tap into. So again, those, how are we going to reach that goal? How are we going to make sure that all of our students are prepared for their future and to make sure that they're invested and involved? And I truly believe that is through building a positive school culture, you know, making sure that we have that social, emotional awareness intact, obviously our academic initiatives and our family and community connections. So we can't stop there, right? We need to continuously grow. And I just wanted to just tell you briefly about an initiative that I'm involved with for the 2016-2017 school year. Dr. Hirsch, Marilyn Sweeney, Anne Marie Friore, and I are, have been taking a Blended Learning Course sponsored by MasQ. And what Blended Learning is, basically it's combining your digital content and activity with face-to-face instruction to address student needs, differentiate instructions. So we can actually use this data to inform instruction and make, you know, make decisions for next steps. So what we're going to be doing next year is we're going to be engaged in a pilot. We've asked up to ten pilot classrooms to be involved, grades one through four. We're going to provide ongoing professional development for them. Eileen Young, I believe, is here, is going to be providing some of our professional development, along with myself, to the teachers over the summer and then throughout the year as well. And hopefully, we're going to be getting some additional resources, preferably iPads, but we'll see, for our pilot classrooms. So again, thinking about, you know, something, that's the fun, that's the best part of this job, is thinking about how we're going to continue to grow and how we're good now, but how are we going to even get better? So that's very exciting to me. So I just, I'm going to ask if you have any questions? And this is, oh, I don't know where it went, Linda, my discussion forum. We'll say, I'll go back. Anyway, it froze.
It was done. Are we still going to do Padlet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to do Padlet.
Escape and just go into Padlet remotely.
Alright, just crashed.
Yeah.
Sorry. So we have a collaborative tool that we've been, that I use with the staff members during a staff meeting, and it's called Padlet. And so what it is, is it's online discussion forum, and so you can live, just log your questions or comments about something. So I thought if you had any questions or comments, I did send this to your email account. If you want to check your email, you can log on to that. So I'm actually going to log on to my Padlet. We were actually having a little trouble with the internet connection when we came in, so I'm not sure if that's why. Hi Kelly. Alright, so someone just made, was that from you, Linda? So we have reflections or comments about Center School initiatives. So what you can do, hi, I'm in. Excellent. So what you could do is you can just double-click and you can write something, any comment or any kind, any reflection. But this is just a tool, one of the tools that we were introduced to during our Blended Learning Course, and I came back and I used it with the staff members, so I thought it was pretty cool. Alright, Linda, she's even posted a photo of herself here. You can do video, too.
I know. That's frightening.
So anyway, so you can use this tool, or you can just, if you have any questions or comments, I'm more than happy to take them.
I'll tell you what, I have to commend you on this student council. I think it's terrific. The kids are all engaged, you know, what they're learning is life lessons. So congratulations, that's a big deal.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I enjoy it, absolutely.
First of all, I'd like to commend you for your use of Prezi, which my kids have been doing for a couple of years now. You're the first administrator I've seen use it, so good job. You're pushing the envelope there.
I like something a little different, right?
Yeah, it is. I'd like to take advantage of the crowd you've got, actually, if I could for a minute or two.
Don't be shy.
You know, there's been a, there's been a fair, you know, it's been a topic of discussion here, the standards-based report cards, but I'm out of that now. So anybody got feedback on standards-based report cards? I mean, has it been a pretty seamless transition? Do you feel like it's more informative than what was before? Is it just kind of more of the same?
You can work as an introduction. You just got the feedback, what you're looking for, and that will all be...
Yes, I felt too, it's kind of the same, it's just almost a different shift of words.
So it hasn't been disruptive or a big deal? Just kind of, you're still getting the information and, you know, you're understanding what it's bringing to you, all that?
Yes.
Okay.
I felt like the informational question that they had was very helpful, and I intended that.
Hmm, okay.
I feel like during a parent-teacher conference, the teachers were very good at explaining the transition, how things had changed, and they were more than equipped to answer whatever questions that we had.
Do you feel like that's helping? I mean, are these standards-based report cards a little bit more aligned to what you'd been hearing anyway in the parent-teacher conferences? Is it just another way of doing business?
I mean, it's very detailed, that thing. I think it gives very specific feedback as to how our children are doing. So I like that.
Okay.
And it gives, I think it gives parents directions on where we need to assist our kids more, because we actually know where they're needing and where they need assistance.
I was going to ask if any one of the kids, another thing we've been hearing a lot about is the zones of regulation. Can you, can somebody give me an example of how that actually got used, you know, in your life, or if you know somebody else who, just give me an example of how something you learned there, you used on the playground or in a classroom or at home?
Kind of strategies that you use if you're feeling frustrated?
It's okay, he's...
Nobody wants to talk. Yeah.
We're doing a good job.
That's fine. And then the last thing, I think, you know, last week I asked the, or the last one of these, I asked the kids for their favorite thing and something that could change. So I'd like to ask out of you, Principal Rogers.
My favorite thing?
What was the favorite thing that you've had this year?
Well, I, my favorite thing, I think, is probably pretty obvious. It's kids, it's students. I mean, that's, I'm pretty student-centered. If I could change anything, um...
I mean, what should we know about, where can we help?
Well, you know what I'm going to say.
I don't ask questions I don't know the answer to.
Could I have some grass?
Yes.
At the Center School.
Yeah, so the grounds need some attention.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the fence did get done this year.
It did. We so appreciate that.
Yeah.
And that happened pretty quickly. But I mean, it's just difficult because we're literally, we're, the kids are playing on a dirt field, and, you know, we have All-School Field Day, it could be All-School Dirt Day. We have a lot of soot coming our way during the recess time.
This is the, that outdoor area, and even a few years ago, it was largely grass, and it's not anymore. I mean, there was a softball diamond there that Chelmsford Youth League used, and it's, and now it just, it looks like it's all infield.
Was it the irrigation, Michael? What was it?
You know, I...
So the irrigation, I did have, after we had the conversation, I asked the custodian to go check out the, to see if that was working or not, and he said it's not. So, we did have a sprinkler system, or there's spickets, and we had walked the grounds together, but it's not functioning right now. So, but we have the issue to...
It'll be, it might be a summer project for a lot of people.
But we have ComEd and we have Summer School there, so we're thinking if it did take place, that we could kind of do it in partitions or parcels or a gradual process.
Right, because the center gets used pretty much year-round.
Exactly.
I think it's an early air-conditioned building, and people gravitate to that during the summer for our special at Summer School, but then also that, the name is escaping me right now.
So ComEd.
Yeah, the ComEd, what are they called, the summer?
Summerfest.
Summerfest. Yeah. So it just gets heavy use, but that is something we'll take a look at.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, the outside is as important as the inside.
Absolutely.
The kids spend a lot of time there. Yeah.
Absolutely. We did get our mulch.
Yes, that's working.
It's all good. We do appreciate that.
And that's an effort with the town as well. I mean, Nick Parley helped out with that.
Absolutely.
And I mean, I think, you know, there are certainly examples of the system working, and I think the town is pulling their weight, but I do also think that the outside needs a little bit of attention.
It's okay to have a wish list, right?
That's right. You should always have a list.
No doubt. So I just want to thank all of the support of the Center School staff and school council members and students and parents for coming tonight. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
And thank you for all that you do. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Principal Rogers, can you just come off of the airplane first before you...
Yes, exactly. You don't want to see what I'm emailing and...
Then when you go, yeah. Steve outside.
He just came in. With the grass situation, does that playing fields too, like the Chelmsford Youth Soccer or others might help with?
I don't think, I don't think soccer uses it, but, I mean, we can talk to the softball folks, I guess. I don't know if they're still using it or not, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I was just trying to think if there's another group that might help.
Right. Thank you, Michael.
It's pretty evident if the sprinkler systems aren't working, you're not going to have grass.
Well, I mean, I think it's going to take a little bit of digging to figure out what was happening. It certainly was in better condition four or five years ago when my kids were still playing softball there.
Pretty much a dirt field now.
Yeah. On the plus side, the mulch has helped with the playground. I mean, there's been some work done there as well.
Right. I think the positive, not only at, say, Center, but we are going to feel this impact at the other schools as well. In a couple of weeks, as our kind of custodians come on board, you know, part of their primary focus is really going to be the external area of the buildings. The contractors are going to be responsible for all the night cleaning that occurs, but our staff is really going to be able to focus on the outside of the buildings, because they're not going to have daily duties on the inside. You know, on rain days and things like that, they'll be able to go inside and help with, you know, changing ceiling tiles or replacing vents, filters, and HVAC units. But any of those nice days, you know, they'll be able to dedicate to outside. That's such a big project at Center, it would be more than just one of them to do.
Yeah, it's not, it's not just a weekend.
It's probably going to be, you know, some kind of a thorough clean-out, you know, probably hydroseating or something. We'll just have to figure out kind of where and when.
Right.
You know, the getting that irrigation system back up and running, we'll have to figure out why that's offline, and at least we'll have some people who can dedicate to looking at that. And I will talk to Brian about that as well, just to make sure it's on the list of things to tackle.
Took a ride by the high school today, running back of the high school, reached out to the DPW today, and I think, you know, it's unfortunate right now, as Aramac is transitioning out, you can see that, you know, they checked out, and you're having a lot of challenges with the outside as school comes to a close, so with that, all we can do is continue to hold them accountable till the end. But if you look at the back of the high school, the front of the high school, you'll have some reservations about that.
No, I don't disagree. It's a, it's a struggle just trying to do this closeout and then get our staff, staff on board, but I am, you know, looking forward to a significant change come the new year. Great. Moving on in the agenda, the second item on the agenda this evening is the Fiscal 15 End-of-Year Pupil Financial Report Audit. As you may recall, every year, the, we have to submit what's called an end-of-year pupil and financial report to the Department of Education, and it basically just takes all of our expenditures for that fiscal year and breaks it down by D.C. Fund Code and how they want it reported. And that information is what the state then uses to, let's say, our comparable districts to kick out analysis between districts. So we supplied our Fiscal 15 report. Powers and Sullivan, the town's external auditor, actually comes in to audit those reports and then issues a specific end-of-year financial audit report, separate from the town's audited financial statements. The books are obviously similar, but this is really just reporting on how we classify all of our expenses on that report. So Michelle worked very closely on that with individuals from the business office. There were three findings on the report, which is attached. They were all non-financial findings. They were minor reporting findings. But I wanted to convey that report to you. I'm not sure if that's something you typically have reported on or received in the past. The first finding was basically, when you look at the report itself, you have to categorize all your expenditures in columns, and there's a column that your report state grants in, and the next column you report federal grants in. And we reported federal grants in the state column, so we had to flip that reporting. So we did do that. We filed an amendment with the DOE, and that was accepted. The second one was very similar. Again, debt was reported in the wrong column of the report, it was flip-flopped. And a third finding just related to the number of special ed students that we reported. Again, it was just a reporting and characterization error on the report, which was corrected. So the DOE, once they're found, goes in and actually modifies our report. The auditors, when they come in, they go back and make sure you've actually made all the corrections, which we did, and then they issue the final financial report. So this is something you'll be receiving annually. Usually you'll receive it in, usually May. It actually got a little bit late this year, but we were on the end of the cycle as far as the report out, so I don't think they actually came in to audit us until March. So we were a little bit late in the game as far as the external audit goes, but clean audit, we gained just those three minor reporting issues. Happy to answer any questions for you and just, again, conveying the report to you.
All I could say is congratulations once again. This shows full transparency with the entire community. If you look at these three items, as you said, they're non-financial items, just a little bit of left column, right column, that should have maybe had a second look at, but I want to congratulate certainly Michelle Cressa, the Director of Business and Finance, for what a wonderful job, Linda, and certainly you, Dr. Lang. This shows once again where we're at and full transparency, and when you have an outside organization like Powers and Sullivan come in and say, "You know what, everything looks good, but just cross this T here and you're all set," I think that's a tremendous accomplishment. So congratulations, Dr. Lang. Congratulations, Linda.
Thank you. Did you have any questions?
No, I think I'm going to let Sal's comments speak for me as well.
Okay. So that's just a report, findings. I will say that they actually came in early this year, they were just in a couple of weeks ago to do the preliminary grant audit for 16, and that all went glowingly. They were very happy with the backup and reports, and so they won't be back again until the fall, so that went well. Down the item, so the third discussion of the evening is around some budget staffing considerations. We decided this discussion at the last meeting, and there were really two issues we wanted to follow up on. One was some discussion around the coordinator positions that we had talked about, and then another was regarding high school staffing for the fall. The first one, if you don't mind me kind of taking it that way, just want to bring some information back to the committee and obviously the public that had been watching. The last time we met, we talked about two coordinator positions that remained to be filled. One was a science coordinator position, and one was an English coordinator position. We talked a little bit about possibly utilizing school choice funding to be able to reinstate one of those positions, but there then was a question that was asked about recall rights with individuals, because as we move forward, we really want to be able to post and advertise and attract, you know, obviously, the best talent pool we can to these positions. So the first thing that we found out is on the science coordinator position, that position is, if we actually did want to reinstate that position, it would just be filled through a recall. It wouldn't actually be advertised and filled. And I think my apprehension with doing that or just a pure recall at this point in time is you're really not advertising and going out to seek a full pool of candidates for that job. I think it's wiser, as I indicated in the communication, to unfortunately, we all want that position, but to basically hold at this point in time on the science coordinator position and include that in the Fiscal 18 budget when we start to work on that over the coming winter. The English department coordinator position was not a recall situation, so the individual that was in that particular position did separate from the district and does not have recall rights. So that technically is a position that could be open. So that's what we were kind of considering, should we potentially tap school choice funds to fund that? You know... You know, would somewhat create a structural deficit using school choice funds for next year, but that was a possibility. I then did communicate to you over the last week or so, as I got back into the office, we had a resignation of our world language coordinator. Mrs. Chabane.
Chabane.
Chabane, who's going to be accepting a position in another district. And we're talking about advertising for that position and moving forward for the following year. One point of consideration, I've had a few offline conversations with individuals. When we look at our actual coordinators, not that any one particular coordinator is, you know, more important than others, we're all serving a good purpose. Wanted to have the discussion with the committee about the possibility of instead of using school choice funding to fund that English position for next year, utilizing the funding from the world language coordinator position to reinstate that English position with the premise that, you know, that is a kind of a core academic position. That particular coordinator, you know, oversees and would have interaction with, you know, say, 30-plus people in their particular department as compared to the world language position. Not that the world language position is, you know, less important. It's a much smaller number of individuals that that person oversees. More of the classes within the foreign language are more kind of elective-based classes. And the discussion could be for next year to possibly, similar to what we had done with the science and the English coordinator, kind of have a teacher kind of serve as the facilitator for that particular program for the year and move to reinstate the English, which would not create a kind of a structural deficit using school choice money, but would provide us flexibility for '17 to be able to reinstate English, still be able to manage world language, and then look to, you know, possibly some revamping of the world language position when we're getting ready for the fiscal '18 budget discussions. So I wanted to have that discussion on the floor with the committee members tonight and kind of get some thought going on that, some talk going on that. That's certainly something that we can consider and should chat about.
So filling the English position would provide relief for other coordinators that are doing evaluations outside of their own department right now?
Right now, you have a situation, and Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, but the social studies department chair kind of assumed the role of social studies and English. And they created a facilitator-type position for English at the high school level. So that person kind of assists with the kind of day-to-day English operations. What this would do is actually reinstate the English coordinator, so the facilitator wouldn't be necessary for English. We could move that facilitator to serve more of the world language at the high school. I believe there's approximately eight or nine teachers at the high school that are foreign language. That would then allow the social studies department chair to go back and just focus fully on social studies. So you would have a dedicated kind of core academic coordinator for social studies. You would have one for English. And you obviously, for the time being, would still be splitting math and science for this year until we could break off and do science on its own a year from now.
Sure. And I'm an advocate for bringing back one of the coordinator positions regardless.
Right.
And I think the English brings in relief for other teachers and actually has somebody to focus on that specific field.
It touches on many more teachers in the district than the world language position would.
That was all. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we need to get another coordinator in this year. And I think, I agree with your assessment that the English one, the English position is more wide-reaching than the world language position. I don't think that spending school choice money creates a, or indicates a structural deficit. That's a renewable source, and I'm loath to characterize it that way. I think it sounds like we should have a discussion about what we want to do with world language going forward. And if the intent is to take some time and to think about that and to examine it, then I think that's a rationale for not filling that position right away. I, you know, I think we still need to have coverage. We need to have a science coordinator. I think if we only fill one instead of, one this year, English is good. It's a step on the ladder. It keeps us moving forward. I think we may need to, I think, let me say it this way. I'd like to hear more about the role of the science facilitator, I think, as we move forward this year. Because there is a lot going on in science with the next generation standards being rolled into the classrooms. There's an awful lot of work there. My first choice would be science, but you make a reasonable case for fulfilling the English position.
Two needs that we have right now, science and English. The world language department right now is approximately, well, let's put it this way. The English department is 300% larger than the world language department right now. That's a greater need right now. You have an opportunity to fill it. Right now, our books aren't balanced just yet. I don't think there's a need to tap into school choice. That's not what it's for, as far as I'm concerned. I think what we should be doing is being fiscally prudent right now, which is let's transfer what we have in the world language department over to the English. We immediately fill that opportunity and fill that void. To Michael's point, we get right on the wagon for next year and start concentrating on filling the science coordinator. And we bring that facilitator up that is right now has a responsibility, and correct me if I'm wrong. I think the number was eight-plus people that the world language department would be, you know, reporting up to. So with that one facilitator, eight people reporting to that, it's certainly a big difference than a social studies teacher that is also writing reviews and for 30-plus people in the English department. So it's simple math. I think this is exactly what we should be doing.
I would agree. I think under the various circumstances that the superintendent explained to us, I think this is the best plan that we can implement at this time.
Do you want to give that to Sal? I just wrote that up.
Thank you, Al. So with that, Al, would you like to call for a motion?
Yes, I have a motion at this time.
I make a motion to approve the advertisement and the advertisement of the English coordinator position for 2016 and 2017 school year. Further, to hold on the advertisement at the world language coordinator position for 2016 and 2017 school year.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing not.
Probably should roll call that, only because of this financial involved.
Sure. As explained, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Agnew?
Aye.
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 unanimous four people with one person absent tonight.
Second position, I don't know if we can invite Mr. Murray, the high school principal, up. I'll let Mr. Murray address it, but I've been doing a lot of work in the high school regarding staffing and scheduling. And one of the scenarios that I actually presented to all of our principals over the course of this last budget cycle is certainly for fiscal '17. We're still kind of in a recovery mode budget-wise. And as we look to the next, you know, year or two, while we're going to try to make some gains in our various departments and programs, we're not going to see an abundance of additional money to be able to start adding a significant amount of positions to the district. So we really need to look closely at our existing positions, how they're being utilized. And again, as Mr. Murray and his staff at the high school have been working on some of the schedule for the coming school year. Again, knowing that at the high school level, as we've seen from the comprehensive facilities assessment, there's a little bit of a student enrollment decline. Actually, at the high school now, for a number of years, we've seen, I think, the highest senior class graduate now, and they're going to be on a downward slope for about six years. So this isn't just like a one-year type trend. This is something to look at going forward. Mr. Murray has actually analyzed some of his schedule for next year and would like to propose, and I would support, a kind of an FTE switch from one particular area to another based on the needs that are presenting themselves at the school at this point. So if you don't mind, I turn it over to Mr. Murray to discuss that.
Thank you for having me. Hello, everyone. How are we doing? So if we could, so we're looking for a new school psychologist, and if you want to click to the next one. So what we're going to do is there's, I'll talk about the rationale and just kind of the data, and then where we get the funding for that. And so the rationale, traditionally, psychologists, for a while, they would work individually with students. They were assigned to a student assistance program because each, the middle school each has one and the high school has one. And they did the general testing you have for reevaluations and referrals. Then over the years, the number of referrals has gone up. The number of programs has expanded, student assistance programs at the zone. Where in the high school, we had one student assistance program. Now we basically have three classes of it. And then what had happened later was that the IQ testing or the WISC testing was always done by guidance counselors. That shifted, and that went to now a psychologist. So they were doing their normal testing, now the WISC, which is probably where it should be anyhow. I think that's the right thing to do. And then our programs are expanding, and we've noticed, we did some, we've talked to some of our staff and students this year through the work that Linda's helped us with MTSS, and what are supports we need for our kids? And it's really come down to a lot of social, emotional health. And this is what our statistics are right now. And so what we have here, as I just said, three years ago, the WISC now came onto the psychologists, and they've been doing that. The special education referrals, we're at the highest last year at the high school, but March of this year, we surpassed that. So last year, we had 12 referrals for special education. This year, as of March, it's 22, and now our latest, we're up to 26 with two pending. And the year before, we were at 19. So that's additional testing that, and then once you get the testing, their job, the psychologist, is done. They're working with those kids within groups. And those numbers are just exploding. And then addition to that, which I didn't put in here, is that our, out of district placements, I'm sure, most suburban towns are high. They go and they do testing there as well. So when our kids are at a private school, landmark, whatever, our psychologists go out there and do testing, which means they're not available in our building. Our resiliency program, if you don't know, resiliency program, I think it's a brilliant program. It's after freshman year, the staff looks at this and says, what are some kids, they're not in IEPs, they're not in 504s, but they're the unmotivated, unintentional learner and disorganized, whatnot. So they created a program there where Margaret Blakely runs, and it's one section. We're up to three sections this upcoming year for kids who are just falling on that, who just, we don't know how to grab them within the classroom. They're just falling. So we have three sections and psychologists assigned to that, to one class this past year. Now we're going to have three classes next year to support students. And so this way, these kids, they don't, they can, hopefully, we can keep them out of an IEP, perhaps not a 504, or probably not dropping out. We can really keep them motivated and moving. We are, as of this past week, we're up to 48 hospitalizations now, and then we have 55 suspensions. Our STEP program are for kids who go out when they're hospitalized and they come back in. And so we have 44 students in there, and according to that, they're staying a lot longer. They're not ready to transition back. And our psychologists work with that group to get them ready to go back. And then once they go back, how do we track them? We just can't drop them. We're going to keep tracking them as they go, so this way they don't fall back. We had 15 kids attend night school but still have access to our services during the day with that. And then our nurses, they brought this to our attention, they're seeing about up to 25 kids per day for anxiety-related issues, stressed out, they can't get back to class. I call on the parents and our psychologists come down there. And so we're now, we had five kids who have dropped out, if you want to put the next slide there. Our number of, in the past three years, are 51 As reporting to kids who have mostly issues at home. Not so much the child themselves, but family structures, that has increased. And then they come back and they process through with our psychologists. We had the break free from depression in ninth grade. And so what they do is after that, you get a referral and say, is there anyone you're worried about or worried about yourself? We had 53 referrals this year, and there were a few repeats in there, but 53 referrals, the kids were pretty stressed out. We had in our juniors and senior class, we had in March, Dr. Rosa and Dr. Lildgren, just brilliant gentlemen, I love the two of them. They came and spoke to our kids, one about anxiety and stress, and then two, signs of depression because of an event we had last year, unfortunate, where we had a student who died. And then at the end of that, kids were, then would talk about who's referred, stress, anxiety. And we found between both of them, we had 28 kids refer themselves or a friend. There were several cases in which I was, for example, would say we're referring Sharon, but people were referring me. And so we have this cycle where kids aren't identifying themselves that they're stuck, that what they're going through isn't quite normal, or how they're handling it isn't normal. And so that was kind of an eye-opener for us because then our guidance counselors had the kids come in and say, you know, you've been referred to as well. And so that's opened the door for some more, some greater discussions in terms of, all right, how are we taking care of each other and whatnot? And then, as I said, the testing out of district students. So it has become a large issue in terms of how we're going to support these kids. And so we're looking at the possibility of having another psychologist have one per house right now. Where Dan Rosa in prior years, and now Vanessa's there, they've been actually doing testing and then working either in groups or individually with kids. This year, I've seen, they're doing that. Mostly it's been testing. They're just testing, testing, testing. And so that group component individually isn't there what it was before. And Dan was saying, Steve, I've, he's done 51 tests this year, and he said, it's just, and that's just time-consuming. You've got to find those times and periods. And unfortunately, kids don't plan their crises. They don't tell Block G, I'm going to fall apart. They're going to, it just happens when it happens. And so that's been an issue. So as Jay said, what I've always done in my prior schools is money isn't there. Before you ask for money, what can we do within our own structures that we can change and alter, et cetera? And I already know that, my feeling is, I'll explain, is the first business classes, our Joe and Mr. Russo's taking the year leave. And we're looking at our classes, we could absorb that and not rehire or replace that position. Give the money back to the school system to work in deficits. Actually, I know in about six, seven years, when the bubble comes up, it'll come back around again. People will help out. So I think that's what we need to do as a leadership team. Looking at our budget limitations, where are we going to find the funding? Well, there's been a few classes. ELA, we had 85 sections last year, this mean, this year, and we really could go with 80 in there. And so there were low class sizes, especially in graphic novel, literature and film, that just weren't requested very high at all. We had a class of 14, graphic novel, there was 13. And when you're looking at the needs of our kids socially, emotionally, you look at what elementary has for large classes in certain grades, and then the need they have administratively there, I think we need to be really prudent in terms of how we're using our money fiscally. And at that time, right now, ELA, with the numbers going down, we can support that. Our incoming freshman class is 423 right now, but that's what's out in the Shoba. And looking, talking to our guidance counselors, they're saying, well, 50 go each year to the Shoba or a private school. So that number's going to go down probably into the 380s, 370s there. And our outgoing senior class is 414, and our current senior class is 374. So as Jay was saying, we're going to probably be under 1,500 next year in terms of our population. So the number's going down, keeping the same staffing structure, I think that's just something that we need to look at, and that's what we've been doing. And I know, and I feel bad, because the teacher that we had at our building, she's a good teacher. She really is. And I know she got bumped into, down into the middle school level, and that creates a problem there. And that's always the unfortunate part. But at the same time, with our numbers going down, it's hard for me in my position and knowing the other problems we have within our buildings, while others, to keep that same staffing model, because I think that just wouldn't be agreeable. So that's where, so that's where we're looking at the funding for that, to fund this psychologist position from that person. As well as we did our reduction, we had low guitar classes, I mean, very low guitar classes. And so we moved a couple of sections out of guitar, one out of music, so it was a .4 for music. And so Amanda Rader, who will be working in elementary and the high school, so she, no one loses a position. She's just going to be taking a position down elementary that does have to fill. And so we're using those two positions together to kind of combine to help out with the psychologist position. So that's what we're looking there. And then as the year goes on, we'll look and see where we are. And so we did class sizes, and right now, our class sizes in English, for the most part, they're under, they're in the low 20s, if you do the average of them. There are some classes at 25, but for the most part, they are in the low 20s and some high teens in there. And I think, I believe that, I believe that's reasonable for classes 24, 1918. That's great. I never had 1918 when I was teaching, and I think that's, obviously, they've had lower classes, so their English department is feeling the sting of that. And we've had several conversations with various members, and one is a large group. But 14, 15 in a class was tough. And it was no fault of anyone's own. It's just that's what's happening. Trends are going down. are going down. And, and we did it based on requests, what were students looking for request-wise. So that's where we are today. And so I was looking to see what your thoughts were on, on some more social, emotional health.
Yeah. I, I mean, just quickly, I mean, I think from my perspective, I applaud the work that, that Steve and the staff of the high school are doing in really trying to kind of live within our means of the budget that we have, looking at all the different ways we're spending money and really figuring out, you know, what is the emerging priority right now? No one is saying it's not great to have low class sizes and, you know, the, the teachers that are affected are excellent teachers. So no one takes any pleasure in that. It's just very difficult in an environment where we have this, this really pressing social, emotional support need, not only at the high school, and I know we've, we've kind of talked about this, you know, this is an issue with the elementary and the middle school level also. And this is something that, you know, I'm trying to work with staff on, to develop some additional resources to be able to add, you know, these kind of social supports to help out our, our staff. And it's just, it's, it's very difficult to have, you know, the declining enrollment and knowing that we already have, you know, class sizes, you know, in the mid, mid to high teens. And by, and again, I don't view this as a budget reduction, you know, we're not making a cut. It's really a shift in the budget to, you know, align your need with your resources. And as unfortunate this is, you know, it's, it's the English department, it's a position being shifted to being a psychologist, that this isn't a, you know, position that's just being cut for the sake of cutting something. But it's hard to overlook the, this incredible need. And again, I don't think this is just a high school need, but I think any teacher and individual staff member you talk to at the elementary and middle school level, you know, would say, we need more psychologists, we need more social workers, we need, we need a social worker, we actually don't have a social worker in the district. I mean, these are the, the supports that are necessary. And I think unfortunately, over the next number of years, no one takes, takes pleasure in this, but these are the decisions we have to, to make. And I think, you know, we always look to try to find like attrition, you know, when you can do that. If someone is retiring, you know, you don't replace that position and you try to not have this affect lives. And we're still going to try to work with staff that are affected to try to, you know, help them, because, you know, this isn't a performance issue. These are very good staff members that have been affected, both of the high school and by the trickle-down effect at the middle school. Again, no one, no one takes any pleasure in that. But I just think, I support this recommendation because of that need that I've seen, just in the short time of being here. And unfortunately, I think this is what we have to start looking at over the next number of years. It's, it's not going to be easy, but I applaud the work, and I think it will pay dividends support-wise.
First of all, everybody that sits on the school committee, everybody that's a part of this administration feels the same way. The first thing that is most important is the health and well-being of every single student. So I applaud you, Stephen, as usual, you've, you've looked at it from a macro approach here and said, what is the most important thing we need to do, which is protect our kids? So when you stop putting up those, some of those statistics that you talked about of the kids that are having some challenges in our school system, there's really nothing else to talk about. How do we fix this problem immediately? So what did you do? You went ahead and found a solution that doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, that actually, if you want to look at it, how do we ask elementary schools to be at 22, 23, 24, and 25? And then we allow house school programs to be at 17, 18, 19. This, your program, taking 85 down to 80, doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't even bring the class size over what the elementary schools are at. So what does it do? It solves the number one priority that will always be for this school committee, which is the health and well-being of every student in this system. So I applaud you. This doesn't cost us any money. Maybe there's an opportunity down the road, I know this teacher might be a fabulous teacher, maybe an opportunity if somebody steps up into the English coordinating position that we might be discussing right now. But nevertheless, it doesn't increase class size, it takes care of the health and well-being of every student in this, and gives them an opportunity, which is the most important. And I just think it's a great job on your part to recognize that need, bring it to us right away so we can address this right away. Thank you, Stephen.
Appreciate it.
Just a comment, actually, a comment and a question. So philosophically, I feel like as a principal, it's not my role to move into your school and try to figure out how you move your numbers around. As long as you feel there's a net benefit for the students, then I'm going to support that. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
And my question is, is that a New York Yankees lanyard?
Still wearing that, yes it is. That's a good one, still wearing that.
Point of controversy in the high school.
Yeah. I got it, I got it from Dr. Hurst, who was right next to me.
Right under the bus.
Wow. I haven't heard a word you said, I've been staring at it. No, thank you, that, that, my comment was the serious part.
A couple of questions. The reduction in sections from 85 to 80, you mentioned a couple of classes that are going to be cut. So we're going to lose a couple of kind of specialty classes, but, but nonetheless, it's a loss. Are the, are the other reductions also small classes being eliminated, or are the classes being combined?
So what we did is, we, we reduced two sections of literature and film. And we currently have one section and there's, and there's, it's low, it's a 14. There were, this year, we're running three sections of that same level and, and, but the requests are even lower this year. So we moved two sections of literature and film. Graphic novel, we're not carrying because it just wasn't, the requests weren't there. And then there was, there were two H2 honors classes, that at the 11th grade level, that we had, nine sections went down to seven. And that kept the classes at 20, 25, 21, 21, 20, 21, and 25. Reason why those are 25 or 21, because sometimes scheduling, the averages aren't perfect.
Exactly. Everything else goes together.
But.
Yeah, I think that would be my biggest concern. It's the, it is precisely those H2 kids that, that maybe get the biggest benefit from a slightly smaller class size. I understand what you're saying about the others. I mean, you hate to lose a class, because if you reach one kid with graphic novels or film or whatever, but you're not losing the film class, you're just, you're making the, you're combining a couple of sizes. Yeah.
Mike, just to be clear on that, there was only the one class that was affected. The other ones, it's just the number of sections that they're offering, so there might be slightly higher numbers in them, but there were no other classes that were eliminated.
No, that's right, only one class was eliminated. The other thing from your presentation, do we need, do we need to start mainstreaming resiliency kind of stuff? Because if, if we're, that's an explosion in, in those numbers.
It was. So we've been talking as a group, and we got those numbers of recommendations from the ninth grade teachers for the resiliency class that went up two sections. Now we're talking to Margaret, how do we expand this program? So we have it going to all the grades, so we don't, because the kids do just not.
Yeah, because if you have that many kids suddenly being identified as needing to break out, you must have other kids who, who just aren't quite meeting that criteria but could certainly benefit from something like that.
Correct, and that's where.
Well, and, and again, I think that's, that's the sort of drive to make the shift, is that we do have, we are seeing things like that.
Yeah, we are. And we want to keep kids in, in our district, in our community. And that's where, because I know we can, and so we don't want to, these are the resources.
Okay.
I would like to just echo your concern about the numbers. It's really scary. And we're, we're obviously addressing it, we hear it tonight from Center School, you know, the, all the different kinds of things that they're doing there, and we've heard similar presentations from all of the other schools. So we're, we're working on it from, you know, K up through. And hopefully, we'll, we'll see some impact from all of that, because we're going to have serious discussions about where to put our money in the future, if we have all these special situations developing. I mean, that, that was shocking, you know, to be honest with you. And, and I'm not looking forward to a discuss, you know, to discussions where we're going to be making decisions about, you know, pairing off academic areas and, and, you know, as, as you said, our primary concern is the safety and well-being of our students. And that's true, but a primary function of us is to educate them. And we don't want to get, you know, we don't want to get into a situation where taking care of the kids and educating the kids are fighting against each other. And we're getting close there, I think, it's scary. I don't want to belabor the point, but I, I agree with you, that was, that certainly caught all our attention.
The biggest number that was kind of staggering for me when we were looking at this was the, the hospitalizations. I mean, that, that is really your, your serious issue. I mean, I, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, can you kind of just talk about them? You're averaging more than one a week, just on average of a hospitalization, but what's actually involved as far as kind of, you know, the, the reentry and the programming and the time that's involved?
Sure.
In those kind of situations? Just because these aren't just like, you know, when someone gets to the level of a hospitalization, it's significant. And do you mind?
A lot of it's been cut, a lot of them cutters, people are cutting, stress and anxiety, not so much chemical dependency, but it's been more mental health. And so what happens is when we get the, the call from the parent or the email saying, my son or daughter is, is at the hospital, and that's when our psychologist then starts meeting with their therapist over there, says, all right, what's going on? Then we have that triangulation with the parent and the school and, and the hospital of, of just the mental health of what's happening. And then as we start figuring out what's, when this person can come back, that's when our psychologists with our guidance and dean start working on what's the transition back? What does that look like? That goes with the STEP program? And then how we follow through with that? Then when the, the student's back out of hospitalizations and now they're back in our building, whether in the STEP program, we're back fully in classes, then we're, we're following up with the liaison, our, our psychologist talking to their therapist who's now outside of school. And then how do we, how do we track that? And then there's relapses. Now, those 43 were not relapses, those were all new, new. They didn't count relapses, but there's, so that, that in itself has been something that, that's been time-consuming for a good, in a good, good manner, but personnel, we don't have the time for.
First of all, Dr. Lang, correct me if I'm wrong, and Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just not the number of kids that are being hospitalized or the issues that we're addressing. What about the reverberations of the other kids that are being affected by their friends getting sick and, you know, the morale of the school system? You know, there's, I'm sure it's not just the, the number of kids that we're talking about that are, have mental or social issues that we need to address, it's just the whole community, your whole school, you know, it's just, this is something that's very, very important. How do we teach quality education if morale starts to go down? Because we have issues that the psych, psychologists can't keep up with. So this is, this is something serious. And I think to your point, and to Michael's point, you know, the numbers are exploding and they're not just exploding with the kids that are being affected, it's the peripheral kids that are being affected, their friends and their family members and the kids coming into school and listening to that.
And, and that's a good point. No, that's a very good point, when I did not make, made a good point, what Dr. Rosa and, and the other, I started calling Vanessa Leary, say is that sometimes their time is also taken by the friends who come down, because they know their friend's in trouble, they know it's gone, and they can't focus on school, so they, they process with them and how to get them ready, because it, it is a trickle-down, it just doesn't affect that one student, their best friend, their friends, et cetera. And, and they never, and when I even get into the part of, of good decision-making in terms of social media and stuff, that's another issue they deal with, and our guidance counselors deal with as well. But no, it, it does, it takes a larger group. You, you immediately know when someone's been hospitalized, is there's three people outside, one of the psychologist's door, to talk to them about what they heard of their friend and et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, I strongly make a motion to approve the advertisement of the additional 1.0 school psychologist position at CHS for 2016, 2017 school year, with the funding provided by the reduction of a 1.0 English teacher position at CHS for 2016, 2017 school year.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? I think we, we've all got the message pretty clearly, I think, yeah.
I want to thank you very much for your time for this, this is, as, as, well you said, it's so important, so I really appreciate it. I know it's, these are hard decisions to make, you feel bad, but I want to thank you for your support, because I think this is going to be great for the long run. And what it was fortunate has been, we have some great psychologists in this, in this district, so that we can add another strong member to that, it's going to be something everyone can benefit from.
Stephen, thank you for recognizing this and bringing it to our attention right away and allow us to react quickly. It's a big deal, great job, principal.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
We're going to do a roll call, vote, Michael, if you'd like to start.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous four votes. I'd just like to say one other thing, and that is that a lot of this is very difficult, and actually, the principal started to touch on this. You know, a lot of it's hidden, he mentioned cutting. That was the biggest lesson I learned when I became an administrator, because they don't walk around with their arms bare or their legs bare or whatever, it's, it's pretty much a hidden phenomenon. And it's much wider spread than you ever would guess. I mean, it's just hard for the, the average citizen to understand that people are in such, you know, pain, that it helps them to feel better to cut themselves, it's just, it's hard. And these are the kinds of things that are taking huge amounts of time for the regular staff, because, I'll just add this, because one of the things, you know, when he was talking about working with the people from the hospitals, in the middle of all this, sooner or later, it comes back to the teacher for work, what do I need to do to catch them up? Can we waive this? Do we do that? So over and above teaching every day, just as the psychologists and the administration are working with all these situations, it comes back to the classroom teacher who has to provide direction and materials for all of those situations, over and above teaching, you know, the four or five classes or whatever. So it's, it's a big demand.
That's true, so you do feel bad for the teacher in the classrooms, they don't want to, they don't want to cause any tri, be a trigger for someone, so they meet, they meet with us to find out, what do I, what can I do, what can I, what can I say? And that's stressful, you want to focus on, on the teaching, but you also don't want to give someone a relapse.
Communicating, people have to, you know, you're caught in the, in the bind between confidentiality and making sure all the people who are involved need to know, because, as you say, you don't want to make things worse because somebody's left out of the loop. So again, you know, we've belabored a little bit, I think it's important for the community to understand what's going on in all the schools from K up through 12, so, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Have a good night, Stephen, thank you.
You throw that lanyard away too.
I almost abstained.
It's a point of con, it's a point of controversy in the schools that we see his lanyard and me saying, you know, someone needs to steal that.
Well, someone will, it's just.
We've offered to buy him a new one.
He won't take it.
And we're going to put in a task force in place from the school committee level to work on that.
Thank you. Our next agenda right on this evening is a, an update on the comprehensive facilities assessment work that's ongoing in the district. I actually attended a, we still have our working group meetings that are occurring every other Tuesday, met with them today. And again, while I was out over the last week or so, Linda had attended a meeting and then she had some information with me. And I think the crux of it is that when we got together, I thought we had a very good meeting a few weeks back to start reviewing the different proposals. We met the first Wednesday in May for our fourth community visioning session, good feedback on that. visioning session. Good feedback on that. That one is also televised. And I know it's been replaying so that the community can see the outcome of that. The school committee did hold a meeting with Jordan Whittier to review all the different proposals. I thought that was very well received. But if you recall at that meeting, we kind of gave them additional proposals to consider. And what they have to do at this point is work with their cost estimator on them. And we met today and just based on a kind of a scoring ranking, cut down to like five or six, like, serious proposals for them to be costing out. But one of the things that they came back to us with is asked instead of next week to to move forward with kind of the community output meeting to conclude the study, they would like a some more time to be able to really kind of refine those those cost estimates, refine those proposals so that we're really looking at, you know, two or three options for serious consideration. But they also don't want to lose sight of two things. Number one, that a significant rationale behind the study was the trying to find where we're going to put the full day kindergarten. So that has to stay front and center. Secondly, regardless of what comes out as a recommendation of this report, we want it to be in time for Falltown meeting so that they can be a full reporting out to the town in October about which direction we think we should be going in, that we've taken seriously those, you know, two to three recommendations. And this is the direction that the the community should be pursuing. So they proposed actually canceling the meeting for next Tuesday to report out, which I'm fine with. They would like to come to our regularly scheduled meeting in July and actually present their draft kind of findings and proposals on the temporary short-term full day K fix, get our feedback and public comment, then come back a month later at our August regularly scheduled school committee meeting because we're not going to have the community presentations at the beginning because it's off season. So we'll use that time for them to present out and actually kind of come to some agreement on the final short-term K plan. And then basically, a couple of weeks later at the September 6th meeting, come back again for a final reporting out of the study. So actually report out their top two or three proposals for the school committee to consider. And then a week or two after that, the date to be determined, they would hold a final public meeting, maybe at the police station or wherever we wanted to televise it, to actually share what those top two or three priorities were, and then help us get ready for the Falltown meeting in October, as far as bringing a recommendation forward at that time. So I thought this revised timeline seemed pretty much on target. We did throw a lot of information at them over the last couple of meetings with additional, you know, options with the high school options kind of coming into play. I feel for my own personal goals of this study, you know, I would rather have quality work in the end and not have something be rushed after how much time we've put into this. And I think as long as we're receiving the draft and final proposals on the full day K over the summer, you know, it still gives us the whole year to do all the planning for that. So we're not backing up against anything. So I am personally fine with this revised schedule. What they're actually volunteering to do is to remain doing the every other Tuesday meeting with the working group. So that'll actually give us five more sessions of time with them to continue to work it through. So I would would recommend we allow this the schedule to be amended and continue working with them and actually try to lock them in for these particular dates over the summer. And they correspond nicely with our already scheduled school committee meetings. And the fact that we didn't have either school or district presentations works out well. So I open that up for the discussion.
Go right to a motion.
Yeah.
A couple of things. No, no change in the price.
Oh, no, no, no cost adjustments, no.
I think there's the one thing I'm not seeing here. I'm seeing the full day kindergarten proposal, I guess. I'm seeing the major construction proposal. I understand where that's coming out. The third thing that is really a critical component of this report is the is setting a framework for capital improvements and maintenance at the schools. And that is just going to come along at that that mid-September.
Yeah, they they it's my understanding, and it's was my practice in the previous study, that they can't really do that, like, five to 10-year capital plan with us until we pick a pick a plan to go with. Because then they're not going to do like three iterations of that.
So, yeah, I'm concerned about that because I'd like to I'd like to start aligning the current FY '17 capital plan with what with what they're seeing.
The '18?
What are we in? Oh, yeah, we're in '17 now. Yes, the FY '18 plan, which needs to be done in December.
Right.
And if they are going to if they're going to make recommendation, final recommendations in September, I sincerely doubt we're going to have a plan, a full-blown plan in place, single option selected before the capital committee, subcommittee needs to start meeting and working. That only gives us a couple of months.
Right.
I don't know what what you're thinking about as a timeline there, but I think there's going to be some bare-knuckle stuff once we see those final proposals. And I'm concerned that that's not quite enough time. That said, we don't I think we ought to be able to identify some schools that are likely to be unaffected and start align and maybe they get priority in the capital plan going forward since we know there aren't going to be any significant changes there. And since we can see the path better there, for FY '18, we start with them. But I would like to see that alignment occur.
Let me ask, when we meet again with them, well, it's not until two weeks, but I'll shoot them an email tomorrow and just ask what their plan for that was. I know they're not trying to skirt that and not do it. Let me just figure out scheduling lives, when they would be getting to that and when we would receive a product. What we had done, again, a previous study that I've been involved with, once we actually selected the the proposal or the plan that we were going to do, basically, then the group that we were working with did the work to create the kind of the 10-year plan. Because what they did at that point is they actually phased all the work for all the different schools based on it was primarily based on the MSBA application cycle of MACH, because they worked with us to figure out when we should be submitting statement of interest for the different projects and what could be a traditional project, what might be able to be like a quick, there was a terminology for like a just a quick repair project.
If we can get if we can get MSBA help with any of this, we want to do that.
Right. And I think, well, again, this is what I'll confirm with them. But in their mind, they're probably thinking MACH, MSBA cycle.
Right.
And if we need to bump that up to December, I'll have to just talk to them about what they would be be thinking.
Again, there may be some schools where it's clear there's not even the possibility of a quick project with MSBA. So those get the attention for the FY '18 capital plan.
I'll ask them how it would come into play. There is no no additional money, though, on this study. They're not concerned about the kicking it out a couple of months.
Okay. The other thing is, yeah, the if we have a final proposal for a full-day kindergarten on August 16, you know, we still have to get the grant stuff rolling, right? All that's due in what, November?
Yeah.
And then we hear back in December.
Right.
So we'd need to come to a conclusion relatively quickly to let people or do you feel like that those initial proposals are mostly already done and we wouldn't change them very much?
For the kindergarten grant, I'm not too concerned about that because I think we've applied a couple of times. So that shouldn't be too difficult to pull off.
Okay.
And it still kind of comes into my, you know, my timeline would be I wanted to complete this this summer. So if it pushes to September, it's not that big of a deal. But if in September this is all finalized and we know which way we're going, and then between September and, you know, kind of that December timeline, we're really figuring out the logistics of everything, that gets us right in line for that December to MACH time period when we're actually talking about how we're going to fund it, you know, and then probably we're implementing. So I think the cycle is still fine. The other thing I do think, because we've put a lot of time into this and people have participated in the different visioning sessions, the summer is traditionally quiet. And I think if we we're certainly not going to be ready by next Tuesday. And to force this final presentation for July or August if there's no one around.
No, no.
We could end up in the fall having to go back and revisit and kind of re-educate people. So if we wait until, you know, right around Labor Day and actually come out and everyone's kind of back into school and they're paying attention to what's happening again in the schools, that could be a good time to kind of finalize this.
No, I agree. I think that from that angle, it makes a lot of sense. I'm not particularly concerned about the calendar. The only other thing is if they do a preliminary presentation on full-day kindergarten, the middle of July, and then they want to give us a final suggestion middle of August, and then presumably we'd act relatively quickly. Do we want to schedule some kind of public input session in between the preliminary and the final? So I mean...
We could.
I think that's a good idea.
That way, we don't overlook anything and they get they get to take advantage of listening. If there's something that I'm not suggesting that somebody's going to come up with a brand-new way to do it. But if there are concerns that they can alleviate with their final recommendation, I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, I'm anticipating that draft report in July, you know, might come down to like, you know, two or three options for us for consideration with some strong kind of recommendation towards one particular option. We can take it all in that night, you know, it would be televised in case people want to watch it. But there's nothing stopping us from a couple of weeks later having a public forum and just letting people come out and talk. And we could certainly even in the summertime, we can do connect ed calls and we can do connect ed emails to families to to let them know about it.
Yeah, as you say, it's a summer and everybody has things to do. But it might be helpful to get some public feedback somewhere along the way there.
They've been very good about adding extra meetings and things. So I don't think they'll mind they'll mind doing that.
I would, sir. Mr. Chairman, would it be okay, Dr. Lang, if I just approve the revised timeline for the comprehensive facility assessment process as shown? Or would you like me to go through each one of them?
As outlined is fine.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the revised timeline for the comprehensive facility assessment process timeline as shown.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
On fire today.
Hearing none. Do you need a roll call? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any abstention or negative vote? No. Unanimous for all four.
Okay. Moving on, we have two items left on the agenda this evening. The first is school committee policy review and some updates. We have 12 policies in the 6,000 series that have been reviewed by the policy subcommittee over the course of the last month or so that we're presenting for review and update. And then the the red one at the very bottom, the 13th one, this policy previously came to the school committee. And we looked at the language that was contained within the policy. And the only thing we didn't modify was the actual limits on the accounts. So Michelle Krester and Joanna and I went back and talked to John Souzer and Dallin about what appropriate balances would be. Typically, we come into problems with this around this time of year because of all the end-of-the-year activities with the the accounts. So we're actually recommending on that. And you do have at the very end of the packet, a memo from from Michelle that just kind of outlines the the recommended limits on that particular policy. So it's it's moving, and this is again, on the checking policy. There's there's no limit on the savings policy. This is just the money that gets moved to the checking account for for us to be able to process checks. But moving the high school account from 60,000 current to 75, and then moving both McCarthy and Parker from 12 to 20. And again, during the course of the regular year, the 12 is okay, but we run into problems at this point of the year. They actually have a warrant for you to sign after the meeting to move some money on an off week just because of the amount of extracurricular activities that are happening at this point of the year. So that would be the recommendation to establish the the limits in those accounts. And if you recall, we just left it as TBD because I was going to be going back to back to work on that. So I don't know how we'd like to to do this review of the 12 regular ones. If you want to go through them just one by one and talk about them, if you want to, how you want to do it, I'm open to whatever.
I think some of many of them are straightforward. There are a couple of things that deserve some discussion.
What if?
If you don't mind, I'll take it.
Please, Michael.
6202, the bullying prevention. Anybody got comments on that? That is largely driven by state law.
There were no changes.
No. All right. I'll make a motion that we reaffirm 6202 bullying prevention.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous for all four.
6203, corporal punishment. I have one question about this. And this is something that was that was actually asked a couple of years ago. Does asking or or instructing a child to do push-ups constitute corporal punishment?
Definitely not.
As a discipline method?
I would I would. Does that happen?
By report.
Well, I guess, I mean, whether it's appropriate or not is another question. I guess I personally probably wouldn't consider that corporal punishment if there's no contact involved. But I'll be honest with you, I've never had that question asked me before. So I'd have to process a little bit further if if you'd like. But I haven't heard of that one.
All right. I will make a motion that we approve or that we reaffirm 6203 corporal punishment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Question that question.
Not anymore. No changes on 6204, except to take out the regulations manual. So somebody's been paying attention. So I'll make a motion. We reaffirm 6204 suspension.
Second.
Any discussion? No. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
School bus conduct also looks like no real changes. So I'll make a motion. We reaffirm 6206, school bus conduct.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
6301, organization of instruction. We are at least thinking about changing that last paragraph, right?
We, yeah, we did actually note that, you know, depending on the outcome of the facility assessment, you know, this is some one we may have to go back and revisit.
So the thought is just to go ahead and reaffirm it now?
Just to keep it as is for now because that is what we currently have now.
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion to reaffirm 6301, organization of instruction.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
6302, class size. All right. I would like to have a conversation about amending that to introduce minimum class sizes. So right now, basically, it says maximum class size for students should adhere to the following guidelines. 22 students in kindergarten and grade one, 25 in grades two through four, 25 in grades five through eight, and nine through 12. Should we make it 18 to 22 or 18 to 25 class size?
What if you have like a specialty class, though? What if you have a class that only needs nine people?
What kind of a class would that be?
Like a special ed classroom?
Yeah.
Well, this says for classrooms not serving students with severe learning needs.
Fair enough.
Yeah, but study skills isn't severe.
Right. There's a difference between hard special needs and severe special needs. And I think you run into a little bit of a problem at the high school level where we try to make sure that class sizes for some of our co-teaching classes, that would also happen at the middle school as well, as well as classes that might be a level three. We'd like to keep them at a certain number so that we can actually work with those students.
So basically, one size doesn't fit all?
No, it yeah, it would not. Definitely at the high school level.
I guess my my question then would be, should we have maximum class sizes?
See, I view these, I guess, as guides.
Right. They're clearly guidelines. They're not. They're not mandatory. But again, I mean, when do we start having a conversation? The class sizes have gotten too small.
I mean, is this an issue that you've run into?
We just ran into it tonight.
Well, but he addressed it. Yeah. So I mean, it's over time.
Well, we addressed a couple of English classes. I mean, we had this, we had, and it came up with the fifth grade classes.
Mike, you make a great point because as the budget starts to tighten up, you're going to have to look at that as an option. So there's no question about it in the future that's coming down. But I think to Dr. Lang's point, you know, this is this is not cast in stone. You know, these are just guidelines to follow where when the opportunity arises, Dr. Lang and I think this board have the ability to to make those changes, plus or minus. Am I saying it the wrong way?
No, I hear what you're saying. But I think this is creating expectations. And we and we heard those expectations from BIM this year. Just leaving aside the question of whether they're objectively right or not, or even if there is an objective rightness or wrongness, the reason they came to us was because we say here that classes shouldn't exceed 25. I mean, if we made that number 27 or 28, we probably wouldn't have heard from those parents. So I mean, I agree. It's true that that these are guidelines, that the language is very clear that that it's not a hard limit. But we are setting expectations here. And I, you know, again, should we have expectations about what a what a minimum class looks like?
Tell me the way it reads, Michael. In your opinion, tell me, if you were to adjust it, what does it say?
Well, I'm asking, I would I would put a minimum size of probably 18 in there.
I just think you're reaching into the kind of the the range of the principal, right? So the principal can make decisions about class sizes like it did today. We need these resources. I just don't see a net benefit to put it in. That's all. So.
Can I? Well, I was gonna say, can I suggest this? I think the elementary and middle school are much more cut and dry, right? And I presented that report to you, I think it was in December, about what those class sizes looked like. And that's something that we can update very easily all the time because the kids are clustered together, right? There's not a lot of class selection. The high school is the area where you're going to see the greatest variability in classes. What if I what if we kept the caps the same as they are now? Because this is kind of talking about general guidelines on the max as we try to set. What if I worked with Steve and his staff to actually identify as they put their schedule together, what are the parameters that they're putting on other constraints that they're putting on the schedule as far as minimums and maximums? And what if we actually then, over the summer in one of our off meetings, what if we took a look at what that effect was on the actual classes as far as where are enrollments at the high school level for the fall? And he may be able to say like, you know, an H3 class, I really need it to be 15 for this particular reason. But what if we actually went back and got his guidelines that they're currently using, his rationale, and then I could report that back to you? And we could see based on the guidelines that he's using, how the actual final class assignments panned, you know, were some too low, were some too high. And we could kind of have that talk about the minimums at that point.
It's possible that the high school should be broken out. Rather than clumping five through eight and nine through 12 together, maybe we clump two through four and five through eight together where, as you say, it's a little bit more cut and dried. And you have fewer specialty classes.
Right.
I will say at the high school, I mean, at this year, I had classes that have ranged from 12 kids and then another class that has 28 kids because it's not only is it like a depending on, you know, how many kids there are, but also scheduling who can take what class when based on the requirements and stuff.
Yeah. And I don't think we want to create a situation where you've got to be able to put 20 kids together to to take AP Calc BC, right? I mean, we know we're not, we don't have those kind of numbers. I mean, we know we're not, we don't have the, those kind of numbers, and we don't want to, we don't want to arbitrarily close things off because of that. But, again, I think the high school's a different, a, a different situation than the elementary and the middle school classes.
Yeah, the elementary and middle are very cut and dry. It's, it's the high school where you have the variability, but what if we, just as a suggestion, we get what constraints he has on the schedule now with his rationale, and then I can report out based on what the enrollments look like, you know, say on day one for the different classes, and we can see how they vary from that. And then if we want to put, um, you know, additional language in on minimums, we can do that in the, um, you know, in the fall, to get ready for the following.
I'm, I'm willing to do that. I, I think this is something we need to continue to look at, though.
Is we gonna hold this?
No, let's go, let's, rather than, well, there's really no changes, but let's go ahead and, and we'll, we can revisit in the fall after we have additional information. You know, if something changes, we'll go back to a policy.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we reaffirm 6302, class size.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Uh, 6304, I believe, has no changes as well, so I will make a motion that we reaffirm 6304, special programs and accommodations.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Uh, 6307, student progress reports to parents. I do have a question here. Um, what are we talking about? Do, are these progress reports really report cards, or are they something else?
Well, the problem, that, well, not problem, the difference is, is now with the portal being open, there's no, there's no progress reports that go out anymore, so you really wouldn't necessarily need to have progress reports.
Right. And, and the respective school handbooks do not have schedules of progress reports.
Correct.
So, do we even need this, right? Do we need this policy?
We might want a policy that says that X2 should be updated in a timely manner because, because a lot of parents do use that essentially as progress reports. Um, but yeah, I'm not sure that this language is what we are looking for.
Maybe two weeks they have to post.
Yeah, exactly.
No, because the portal's open.
They actually use that as their, their form of progress.
Yeah, and in many ways, it's much more timely than waiting to get a, a report once or twice a year. Yeah, I mean, Gerger's on there every night.
And reacting every two weeks.
Right. Right, so, there's already an agreement with the union that teachers will post every two weeks.
All right, well, I'd suggest that we hold this one and reexamine it, and maybe incorporate that language as well.
I have a question on this one. Does this prevent, um, teachers from giving progress reports if they...
No, like a note home that, that says you should have special attention?
You can print out a progress report at any time with X2, right? It's one of the report systems that are available within the, within the program. So, um, if somebody needed one, if you weren't quite sure, if I had given you five assignments and you were thinking, geez, I don't know if I got all of them, you, you could get a printed-out report, but having an online electronic system just, you know, supersedes having a, a piece of paper that goes home.
I will say, I've had teachers that have like printed out progress reports for everyone because they were, you know, maybe the teacher doesn't know how to work X2 or something, so I wasn't sure if this was like, no more progress reports.
At a parent request, a student request, or some teachers, yes, they're, they're vigilant about making sure that you know if you're not going onto your portal, because not necessarily everybody's walking around with a device to check the portal, but at any time, you can always run a report.
And actually, if you read the language, the format of the progress report shall be approved by the Chelmsford School Committee. So, if X2 is the approved, I mean...
I, I don't think we've approved the format of X2. That's, that's being driven more by the tech department.
Yeah, we should hold it. I'm just saying there's language about the format, so we could just adjust this or get rid of it altogether, but...
Yeah. All right, so we'll hold that.
Hold 6307?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, 6311, also no changes. Um, I'll make a motion, we approve, we reaffirm 6311, student records.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Uh, 6318, uh, some minor language changes, uh, but I'll make a motion, we reaffirm 6318, student participation on advisory committees.
Uh, second, sorry.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Aye.
Any discussion? Thoughts?
Nothing in particular.
No discussion. I was ready, ready to vote.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Uh, 6319. The last sentence. Tuition and other fees for each class program or service will be determined by the Director of Community Education and approved by the Superintendent and Chelmsford School Committee. I don't think we've ever seen a schedule of fees for community ed. Um, and not for nothing, the fiscal year starts July 1. I'd love to see some kind of report, both from community ed and the other, the other big one, it would be food services.
Well, the food service one's coming at the next meeting.
Okay.
Because we need to make an adjustment to that, so that one's already coming. If you'd like on the, um, so, when's the last time you saw the schedule of fees for commed?
I don't remember.
Never.
Okay.
So, one of the things I'd like to see is, is kind of a couple of years of prior numbers, uh, just to, just so we can kind of see where changes are occurring and, and give us a little bit of grounding in it.
Just help me, Michael, uh, help me, Dr. Lang, with that last sentence in the Chelmsford School Committee. Tell me why it comes up to us as opposed to stops with our superintendent.
My argument would be because it's dollars and cents. It, it is a part of the budget that we're responsible for. We sign the warrants for it. We, um, we are responsible for tracking that money. Uh, it is, it mostly goes through a revolving fund, so it's a little bit different than the, than the standard appropriated budget.
Approving it?
Well, again, I think...
Because that's what it says, right, Michael?
I would, yeah, and I'm not sure that we want it to say tuition and other fees for each class program or service. I, I don't necessarily need to tell them how much to charge for beginning guitar or, or the field trip to the Mohegan Sun, but what I would like to see is some kind of, some kind of line item budget that says, you know, we think, we think we're gonna take in this much money on, on, I don't know, classes, right? And this much money on trips, and whatever other kind of broad categories, the same way we do with the appropriated budget. We don't, you know, we're not arguing over what each teacher gets paid. We, we, we give it a category and say, look, keep it in between the ditches.
You're right. You just clarified, uh, my concern was, I, I don't want to get into the approval of, of fees and, you know, I just want to be able to say, how much money's in there, you know, what do we use it for, you know? But I, I certainly don't want to get in to start, you know, creating the structure.
Right.
You know, so, that's all I wanted to be careful of.
And the thing is, if you're just rubber stamping it, if you see the fees and you're just voting yes anyway, because that's usually what people do on small items like that, because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna dive into them either, right? So, I have a...
Well, I'd like to, well, I mean, if, if you, if community ed includes KCC, things like that, I think I would like to know what they're charging and how, what they charge this year compares to what they charged last year, and, and what their population trends are doing, because again, that...
Yeah, but those are big numbers.
Right, exactly.
And I agree with you, Michael.
Right.
But the minutia, I don't want to get into the weeds.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, the only other thing would be, um, you know, we are gonna be bringing forward some policies around, um, you know, use of facilities. Again, now that Aramax coming out, we're coming in, um, to manage the facilities, you know, we need a fee schedule and a free, uh, fee structure for, you know, what you charge for, um, you know, gym time and things like that. Um, we have a similar thing with the PAC and Bernie now that manages that, so there will be like a fee schedule that you approve for that, um, so that'll be, that will be coming forward within the next month.
Well, so, should this be a 6,000? Should it be somewhere else, like in the, the 4,000s?
Um, we, I don't think we've gotten there yet. I don't think it, where it's, where it's here for historical, historical purposes, leave it in the 6,000, I think it's fine. When we get to the fours, why don't we see what is actually in there as well, and just, if, if there is a policy there around the use of facilities or fee schedules, um, we could bring that up at that point in time and figure where to leave it. I don't want to have the same policy in two different sections because that becomes hard to, to track in the future, but, um, we're kind of systematically going through these, so if it's already there, I would leave it until we get to another section that it might make more sense to be in.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we reaffirm 6319, adult community education programs.
Second.
Question made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, last one. 6502, administering medicines to students. There has been a change to this, uh, which would allow students with, uh, proper prescriptions to self-medicate while participating in out-of-state or country field trips. That's, that's good with the nurses?
Yeah, well, this is a recommendation that, that came from that, that grouping. I think this, this comes into play, and again, I'm speculating, but like, um, you know, even when it comes to like inhalers and things like that, on these, um, out-of-state, you know, or like the, when you go to another country type field trips, you know, kids do have medications, and there isn't necessarily always a nurse to, to administer it. And I think once you get to the high school level, if it's something, you know, I'd be comfortable with my own, you know, son, you know, using that or, um, something like that.
We will occasionally run into it in high school, uh, middle school.
It's possible.
Right, I mean, they're, they're out-of-state now.
I think it just depends on the maturity of the child and the parent, kind of making that, um, that decision when they're doing this.
It requires permission anyway, so the parent, if the parent wasn't comfortable, they could just say, no, I want the nurse to administer. Right.
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve 6502, administering medicines to schools.
Uh, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And then finally...
This is a new policy.
Yeah, as Jay noted, well, it's been, it's rewritten, right.
We, we had brought this policy up in the fall when we were doing a review.
Okay.
And so, we, we kind of looked at, and we reviewed all the language part of it, but we left the, uh, the dollar amounts that we were gonna carry as, to be determined, because we didn't know it was reasonable. So, then Michelle and I went back and talked to John Souzer on the town side to figure out what that dog amount should be, so now I'm kind of bringing it back to you with those dollar amounts.
All right.
So, we're just, we're suggesting the high school, again, go from 60 to 75, and the two middle schools go from 12 to 20.
All right, so I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve the revised 4304, student activities accounts.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And that wraps up the, uh, the policies for this evening. So, we're gonna hold on 6307. I'll bring that back to the group and...
And 6302 are gonna get the high school guidelines.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna get the high school guidelines, I'm gonna get the commed fees, um, and then we're gonna hold 6307 in total.
Yep.
Yep, I'll work on that. Um, and our, our last, um, agenda item for the evening is just the, um, the recommendation to approve two, um, out-of-country, uh, actually, one out-of-country and one overnight, uh, field trip to take place during the next school year. Um, Chelmsford High School has a group, uh, looking to do a trip to Costa Rica in February of 2017, and, um, Chelmsford High School also has a different group looking to do